We'll go ahead and start. Councilmember Peterson will arrive a little bit late here, so it is past the 5:15 time on September 5th, 2023. Call a meeting to order. Jane, you want to do a roll call?
Shaven.
Hi.
Kroger.
Here.
Lindberg.
Here.
Councilmember Rudolph is absent, as well as Councilmember Lindberg. And Councilmember Peterson will be here soon.
Jane, you've all...
He just indicated he's on his way.
Okay, Richard is?
Yes.
And we've got the newest agenda. Basically, all we're doing is removing 4C3 from the agenda tonight. That'll be at a different time on the Omaha, Jump Omaha Skydiving Event. And then we're going to move up the HMU report up to...
Can we approve the agenda quick?
Okay, yeah, so we'll go ahead and approve the amended agenda. Motion to approve.
Motion.
Second.
Motion by Kroger, second by Shaven.
Shaven.
Aye.
Kroger.
Aye.
Lindberg.
Aye.
State any conflicts now or along the way when they arise under the consent agenda. These are all under one motion, one roll call. We have the minutes of the August 15th, 2023 council meeting. Claims list 1297 and the amount of $127,321.2. We've all got a list of those, some of the larger items. So are there any concerns or questions about any of those for anybody? Seeing none. And we have a new application for Milk and Honey Class C Retail Alcohol License. A renewal application for Casey's General Store, 2914, Class E Retail Alcohol License. And then also a renewal application for El Makata Tito, Class B Retail Alcohol License. Is that the new place then down on Cyclone? Is that...
Yes.
Okay.
And should that say new application?
It would say I don't...
Yeah, they're probably, it could be new.
It may have just been a...
I don't think they've had one before here in St. Louis, probably. Maybe where they were at if they had another store. So I'd change that to a new application for them.
Yes.
Yes. Oh, yeah, I'll change that. Thank you.
Yep. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Motion.
Second.
Motion by Lindberg, second by Kroger.
Roll call, Shaven.
Aye.
Kroger.
Aye.
Lindberg.
Aye.
Thank you.
And then we will move HMU's report up. Mr. Rueschenberg.
Well, thank you, Mayor, for accommodating me.
Richard?
I've got about five items, just some updates. First off, our raw water project is moving forward with good progress. The boarding contractor should be completed with the river, three river boars this week. They actually got the, by day's end tomorrow, they should have the two on the north end, and then they would re-mobilize down to the south, one down by the Sioux Street Plant. Get that one taken care of before the end of the week. Well, the well drilling contractor should be on site next month, looking in October. Reason for that, we're waiting on the window of disturbing the Indiana bat, which that window ends October 1st. So there's certain trees we can't remove or clear out just because of that species of bat. So more than likely, it'll be right away first October, the well contract will be on site to get started on those four of the wells. We're looking to install the new field drive off of Maple Avenue, probably in the next couple of weeks here. We have all the permits in hand. This is just replacing the current drive that comes off of our east well field into Shagener Seeds Field. Since that's going way with the boat grant project, we are coordinating to put one out to right off of Maple Avenue on that field. Looking to start installing concrete pipe. This is in the ditch next to our lagoons down there on Utility Avenue. We're just trying to complete that pipe work, get rid of that ditch, or get rid of that waterfall there, get it in a culvert, so at least then we can maintain that ditch, keep it mowed, keep the weeds, keep the trees out of it. But that's right along Utility Avenue there. That's the same one there, or same way with the other entrance permit. We've got all our permits in place, and we're so, we're good to go on that project also. We'll work on getting the presentation set up for home serve at our next HMU board meeting too, to make contact with, kind of read the email today, what's the else's name again?
Ashley.
Ashley.
Shawalski.
Yeah, just have to get in contact with her and see if maybe she can just have a quick little presentation at her next board meeting here.
You have to need that contact again?
Yeah, but I think I still got the email on that, Gene, so I can book her, make that contact.
Right.
And then last item, I don't know if I've mentioned this before, but Lining Construction was Lo, or is, is going to be our contractor on the new electric department office in our truck bay. Have not discussed, have not discussed the starting date with Lining Construction yet on that, but, you know, he, they indicated that that work would be completed during the winter months since it's in sight. So at least we'll be moving forward for that here, late fall or the winter. That's all I have. I don't see any questions or concerns for me.
On that, Joe, on the, just to, the office on the truck bay, is there any plumbing or sanitary?
No, it's just, didn't we make contact on that, Roger, just to see if there's, pull any permits? Only we're going to have there is just a mini split unit for air conditioning and heat. Otherwise, it's just electrical plus the heating and air.
And total control.
Yeah, we're going to have a couple data jacks out there that will just come right out of our building.
Sure.
End of that. But it should be pretty straightforward. All right?
How's the water conservation going?
Good. I forgot to ask Donald here last, or was that last week? I think there was a couple of days where the plant actually shut down for two, three hours. So we weren't running 24 hours a day, but at least three minutes of cycling. Getting good use out of the reject water. The company that's doing the reclaiming on 59, Harlan up to the county line, they're getting, they're getting all their supply water, using that for that process. I think they got to add water with that additional. I think they use it to emulsify asphalt to add back in when they reclaim it, lay it back down. But they were saying, yeah, there's absolutely nowhere else. I think this is kind of the last, last place that they looked. I mean, they were saying they can't get water from any other town. And he said, well, you're welcome to the reject water. So at least we're getting use out of that. They're just kind of parking a semi trailer there, I don't know if you've been by, and I think just let, because there's only so many gallons a minute, so they let that just fill continuously, and then they come in with a couple other smaller trucks and fill off of that tanker, just to kind of keep it going. Seems to be working for them, so. But otherwise, yeah, you know, well, hopefully here now if you've got some cool weather coming up, that, that's got to help too. And that will be lifted here at the end of the month, as far as the water wash.
Thanks.
All right, thank you.
Thanks, Joe. We just moved him up, Richard, because he had some time constraints for checking on them. It's not like we're getting, nearing the end.
No, no.
We saved a couple things for you to do. So then we'll move on to other business. Accept and approve the 2023 annual tax increment financing and debt in a certification, certification, so that we're right.
So since we have urban renewal areas and we have projects that have been identified in those, in TIF, TIF projects in those areas, we're able to capture either, say, a bond appropriated just for that project or projects that we've expended dollars on. And so what this report does is tells the county auditor annually that this is the amount that has not been previously certified, that we're eligible to receive as reimbursement for the projects that we've expended them on that are approved in our urban renewal area. And then this can be certified in taxes. So this is, on pages two, three are listed, the projects and the amounts in which we're able to identify and certify. The only bond that we have associated with this is the 2020 GEO bond. And that bond was actually split into sewer, GEO, and TIF. So it's only the portion of TIF that goes, the principal interest that's to be repaid. Does anybody have any questions?
Jane, is there a motion to approve that?
This is required every year.
Yep.
Motion.
Second.
Motion by Peterson, second by Kroger.
Roll call, Shaven.
Aye.
Kroger.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
Lindberg.
And then next up would be Resolution Number 2541 to accept and approve the 2023 Annual Urban Renewal Report for fiscal year ending June 30th of 2023.
So this is another annual report that is due each year, and it, it's a recap of also expenditures and revenues that flow through the fund, the TIF fund, our Tax Increment Financing Fund. So those dollars are tracked separately, revenue coming in and expenses going out. So this is a report that's due each year to the Department of Management of the state of Iowa that identifies each of these expenses and, and why, what, where, so.
Which housekeeping we do every year.
Yes, yes. And there's a couple more coming too.
Jane.
Just trying to knock them out one at a time.
There are motion to approve Resolution 2541.
I'll motion that, there.
Second.
Motion by Lindberg, second by Kroger.
Roll call, Shaven.
Aye.
Kroger.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
Lindberg.
Aye.
Thank you.
Next up, we need to receive and file the Airport Commission Minutes from August 22nd, 2023 meeting.
Motion.
Motion by Kroger, second by Shaven.
Roll call, Shaven.
Aye.
Kroger.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
Lindberg.
Aye.
And then out of that meeting, we need to review the amendment for memorandum of understanding for the Ignite Pathways for Use of Hangers 2A and 2B.
I'd be happy to, yeah, happy to expand on that just a bit. Two action items, item one and two are tied together. Council liaison Sharon Kroger has participated and kept up to date with this evolution, quite frankly, with, and this is specific to our, this first item is for the, called the Quonset Hangar, is probably the best way to identify that one, is presently in that memorandum of understanding with Ignite, presently coordinating, coordinating the use of that space is with the city. Well, with recognizing Scott Pigsley becoming an FBO there, we just want that to clarify that, that that would be coordinated with Scott. Scott's already been heavily involved with Ignite and been facilitating some of the limited use, hope to see more of it. Wanted to make that amendment, and this would be through the end of that MOU, which is next, or June 30th of 2024. We have reviewed this with Ignite, and they were more than okay with it as well. Just need a final review and approval on that from the U.S. Council. And if Sharon wanted to add anything to that, then I can expand on the FBO agreement. It's minor, but necessary.
Yeah. Okay, is there a motion for that amendment? Review that?
Motion.
Second.
Motion by Kroger, second by Peterson.
Roll call, Shaven.
Aye.
Kroger.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
Lindberg.
Next up, we need to review the fixed base operators lease with SNP Aviation LLC to be effective through June 30th of 2024.
This is exciting for the fact that with intent, a number of years back, we split the agreement, actually have two agreements at the airport. One is an airport manager agreement, which Scott Pigsley has been fulfilling that airport manager agreement with the specific duties in terms of oversight, maintenance, direction at the airport for the Airport Commission, which oversee him. The other agreement with intent was to have a FBO or fixed base operator agreement, and those types of services are generally what you see with individual businesses that come into an airport and want to set up shop either for repair and maintenance, annual certifications, flight instruction, training. And at the point now where Scott has started to grow that side of his business, and that's exciting for a GA or general aviation airport such as ours. For example, in the last year, he's acquired a plane. He has had a couple of students. And then we recently learned that one of the first solo flights has taken place at their art airport just recently, which hasn't happened in over 15 years. And that was one of Scott's students to grow and build the aviation community. In addition, as part of the hat I would say he's wearing with Ignite Pathways to support their education and exposure into the aviation industry. So there's no cost as agreement other than giving him access and oversight of the terminal building and the Quonset building for supporting and growing that side of his business. It doesn't relinquish any of the responsibilities and requirements as airport manager. It just allows him to grow another part of his business, so. And has been looked at by the Airport Commission and shared with you a few times in the past six months, but this is the time which the Airport Commission has approved and recommended this and looking for that final review from you. And of course, if Sharon wanted to add to that.
Well said, thanks.
You were the first solo flyer?
No. I wish I were. I fly on two wheels. It's a delight.
Okay, is there a motion to approve the...
And this would be through, just for clarity, effective upon your approval and would go through June 30th, 2024. So both agreements would follow the same timeframe and would be re-looked at and considered annually.
I own motion.
Motion by Lindberg. I'll give that one to Shaven, second by Shaven. Sorry, Sharon.
That's okay. Roll call, Shaven.
Aye.
Kroger.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
Lindberg.
Aye.
Moving on to item D, we need to receive and file the Personnel and Finance Committee Minutes from August 23rd, 2023 meeting.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Motion by Kroger, second by Peterson.
Roll call, Shaven.
Aye.
Kroger.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
Lindberg.
Aye.
And out of that meeting, we need to review the recommendation to approve a new code enforcement officer position and begin advertising, which is kind of an exciting thing. I mean, it's Gene's, Jane and Ashley's gonna maybe get rid of a couple hats that they spin around in that office right now, Roger. You probably won't get rid of any hats, though, I'm guessing.
I don't think so.
Be a mini hat or something sitting on your shoulder, probably.
As was, as was noted with the committee meeting, which began three of you, Sharon, RJ, RJ's not here, but Troy and Mayor attended that committee meeting and believe had some very fruitful and educational discussion and information, you know, for the public. This is something that's been off and on considered for, this probably is far back we said, is seven or eight years ago. And with, you know, time to review this and was in consideration of re-unified law enforcement. Once again, historically, this has generally been more reactive and generally more by committee. And we're at a point where we believe it would be the public's, our community's best interest and some community feedback, including even such as our comprehensive plan, that would support the addition of this position. This would also be an assistant building inspector that would support Roger and his function with the intent, again, having his position report into Roger and the building function. And the last item I would kind of relate is that, you know, the communities that we studied and looked at other communities and position descriptions, if you looked at one position description, you looked at one position description because it's very unique and custom to the needs of that community because of somebody that just wears so many hats. Some of these other positions were more focused on nuisance only, some had a more focus on building code, some had additional duties assigned with more public works areas. And with our position description, which you've all reviewed and had some good feedback on, we believe is tailored to as best we understand our needs. And we fully expect this will evolve over, you know, six, 12, 24 months, yet we're at the point now where we're ready to make that begin, and we, it wasn't clear with our budget expenses for law enforcement and public safety for this next year, so there's no budget, anticipated budget amendments for this. And Roger's here, so he was here to answer any questions or want to expand anything, and certainly Jane's helped with helping us to ensure financially we're in the right position to do so.
Anybody have any questions for Roger, Gene, Jane?
And when you're not reading through the review notes and the questions in the Q&amp;A and so on, questions that I had, so the hours and, I wasn't quite sure, maybe one question would be, obviously, if this could be like more of a flex for you or will there be overtime for callouts?
I would say that would be pretty minimal.
Yeah, okay.
And we, that was brought up at the committee meeting, so for example, if there was some specific activities that needed to take place on Saturday, so, which is very common, we exempt a flex, so in that individual day, he is anticipating four to five hours on a Saturday, we would ensure that, do our best to ensure that week that four to five hours is taken off during the week to try to keep that within 40 hours.
Perfect.
Is that a question?
No, I, and that is my question. Thank you, Roger, and thank you, Gene.
And we would, as discussed, we would intend to start advertising for this both internally and externally this week upon final approval.
And we plan to post these Q&amp;As on social media or website, or?
We sure can.
I was just, I didn't know if that would help answer possibly some community questions.
Are there any specific items on there that?
I think it just gives an overall general understanding of what the plan is.
It might help answer some responsibilities, like what exactly they can and can't do, I would say. I mean, because they're not obviously certified bond enforcement, so.
That's what I was going to say, the officer part, since what we just went through, my got some questions.
Or we can make up something maybe just a little bit different that maybe geared towards the citizens to answer some of the basic questions, but I think we'll get a response for it, so.
Yeah, good input, thank you.
Anyone else? Is there a motion to approve this position, sorry, advertising?
Motion.
Second.
Motion by Peterson, second by Lindberg. It's louder, Sharon.
Roll call, Shaven.
Aye.
Kroger.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
Lindberg.
City Administrator Report.
A few updates post, post-holiday. Hope everyone has joined a nice long holiday weekend. Today has been a Tuesday, or as I call it, a Monday times two, so it's been a pretty active day here, but I hope the community as well as all of you had a nice holiday weekend. A couple of updates we want to pass along. We did have an EMS advisory, I should say, down in some of those, but Rogers are designated. Met early this morning, so a nice 7:00 kickoff. And one key item from there is, again, this is deeming EMS an essential service towards the November vote, and there will be community informational meetings, and they've all been set up. The one for Harlan, at least it will be hosted in Harlan, it's going to be Thursday, October 5th, and that'll be at 7:00 PM. There'll be a lot more communication coming on these, yet wanted to inform you that the committee has been working diligently, and I know with the newspaper as well, Jan, he's been, Jenelle Sorkin has been working closely with the newspaper, doing Yeoman's, trying to do Yeoman's job as far as cascading information so the public is educated.
Will this be at Turks?
This will be at Jerkison Center, yes. And again, stay tuned for more, a lot more communication on those, we want to let you know those will be happening. The Planning and Zoning Commission is meeting next week as we come to the final, final few steps in our comprehensive plan adoption, and anticipate that that will be on the council agenda for the 19th. There's been plenty of starts and stops to our, our comprehensive plan update, yet this will be the final review and adoption of that, and fully expect to have that in front of you on the 19th. We had a USDA, we had a street project status meeting from the large USDA project with all the work that's been done. We met at 1:00 today with our engineer as well as USDA, did some reviewing of kind of status reports, pay apps, and we are awaiting final confirmation on the punchless items from the contractor. Believe that they'll be in to do some of the pavement, final punchless items on this Saturday, and then still awaiting final date on the, some re-grading and seeding and a few other touch-up items on some current areas, so all in all, that has gone well. Speaking of, our engineer that's helped us with that, we also contacted Snyder and Associates to provide a review of the Fourth Main Bridge, and they are now, we just received that last, late last week, and I'll be working with the Streets Committee, that'd be Richard, Kyle, and Gina, to set up a meeting probably week after next, just to coordinate it all with the engineers. And just a precursor to that, as I review the initial report, quite frankly, don't like any of the options they pointed out, so, but primarily due to cost, but think it's important to get a U.S. governing body up to date with what's going on, and Streets Committee will have a chance to look at that. I'll be working with you to get that set up. The welcome sign, entrance signs, again, awaiting final confirmation from the contractor, which is Perry Rose Canopy and Sign, and updating you as well as the public, it's likely looking towards if that would construction start next spring versus this fall, yet not towards leaning towards right now, but certainly keep you updated on that. And the final item I have is that starting to see some minor changes to the exterior of City Hall, and again, kudos and hats off to Jane and the City Hall team and some other, and our extended team that have helped out. Again, some cosmetic and aesthetic changes, a couple of functional changes with things like the front door entrances that, so you'll notice as you walk out this evening, if you did see on the way in, that the, the lower half of the front is already painted into color, some of the upper trim has been done, so.
It's just the bottom a little bit.
So that cosmetic change is starting to happen, and that was, again, within our facility improvements, plan and budget, so, and again, hats off to builders who are just making that happen, and always nice, nice to have a little makeover and cosmetically, it was time for our City Hall facility.
How long's it been, Dave, since we've done?
I have no idea.
I don't know if we've done anything since.
We haven't done anything for a minute either.
Yes, but... Yeah, it's better.
The electrical is done for the automatic door openers, and so they'll be able to come in and install the openers now that the electric has been put in place.
Next few weeks, I'm sure you'll see some more changes.
Is this built, what year was this building built? Seventy?
Six, middle.
Sixty-five.
The 60s, I believe.
So it's vintage?
Originally, yeah.
Vintage, yes.
It's part of a bank and.
It's a nice one.
But the Homeland Bank, I believe, was the original tenant or owner. Those are all the updates I have, unless you have comments or questions for me.
Thanks, Jane. Nice job.
I don't hear anybody questioning anything, what's going on? Jane, you must be doing a good job.
To, hats off to the team.
Yep, team. Um, next up, under my report, I just would like to proclaim the month of September is the National Suicide Prevention in Action Month of, for the city of Harlan. I mean, this is one of those things we do every year, and I don't want to make it sound like it's, like just going through the motions, because this is one of those serious things that it affects, I think mainly it affects the people that deal with this in our community, and those are the people that, because it does happen, you know, it is a very sad situation when this does happen, and we have people that deal with this that we never even know about, and those are the people that have to, I think, you know, be appreciated and recognized. This is one of the leading causes of death, the suicide, which I'm sure we've had bad days, some days, and hopefully we don't ever get to that point, but there are some people that have really bad days, and this, it happens. I mean, it's some of the stats were from 2021, but there are 132 suicides completed every day. I'm sure that's, if that's just in the United States. So I would just recognize, you know, mental health, education, and law enforcement, that there's, those people are on the front lines that hopefully help someone, you know, whether it be once a day, or once a month, once a week, whatever, so. I don't have any other items under my report, I don't think Todd is here, didn't mention anything about reading any reports, so. Have you heard from Joe? Any comments from the public or the council? Quiet, Kyle, everything's good where you are?
Go on, guys.
All right, well, appreciate you zooming in for us today, so.
Hey, not a problem, glad to be part of it. Glad to go.
Meeting adjourned.
Thank you, guys, appreciate it.
Take care.